All right, I'd like to call to order this joint public workshop, the City Council and the Planning Zone and Commission on Monday, August the 18th, 2021, was scheduled for 6:30. Unfortunately, it's 7:20, and I do appreciate and beg your indulgence for starting late as we had to take care of business beforehand with our ad hoc QB committee, and still appreciate their time and effort. So with that, we'll roll call the City Council. We have members, well Perez is walking in the door, we have Member Owens, Member Little, Member Kamkar, Member Hernandez online, Member Carbone in the chambers, and I do know Member Orlando will be in in just a second. So we do have a quorum with that. Madam Chair, would you roll call and certify your quorum?
Sure, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I turned and looked at Lainey and forgot we had a chance.
I've been called worse, it's all right.
So Mr. Chair, sorry about that.
That's all right. I'm gonna blame Mr. Fuertes for this. We, Mayor, we have a quorum short of two, Ms. Hendricks and Ms. Boswell, they are not available.
All right, appreciate that. And moving forward, citizens' comments. Madam Secretary, we had a comment or a citizen signed up, I believe it's one of the consultants though, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, so one of the consultants had signed up. Is he online or is he here?
He should be online.
Okay, just making sure as we get to it, you have one of the consultants online that can chime in when we get there. All right, with that, we'll move forward in our agenda to item five, introduction of the agenda and format of the workshop. I'll put it on the, just put it out there, input and discussion requests by Andrew Lang, BGE applicant on behalf of William and Robert Lou, owner for a joint plan development workshop on approximately 74.71 acres. This is, would be a part of the Massey Oaks project. So with that, turn it over to staff for staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. So for those who have not been able to join us for a workshop previously, I'll run us through what those look like, just to give you the format. We've already had the call to order, then we'll do the applicant presentation after the staff report, followed by council, commission, and staff discussion. Again, the purpose of this workshop is to discuss a new plan development. This plan development consists of single-family and multifamily and an elementary school site at the southeast corner of Old Massey Ranch Road and future Harkey Road. It's approximately 74.71 acres of land. You can see here is the aerial of the location. There's some ETJ property north of the intersection of Harkey and Old Massey Ranch Road, and then it has the canal bisecting the land along with some pipelines. For the future land use designations, for the zoning designations, let me rephrase that, we have residential estate as the current zoning out there. This is similar to what we had for the, when Massey Oaks originally came through. All of this land south of then McKeever, now Old Massey Ranch Road, was zoned RE. To the south and west, we've got the Massey Oaks Plan Development. To the east is undeveloped land, and then north of this property is low-density residential developed land. Now to the future land use map. We're showing suburban residential for the classification of this property. Suburban residential has residential estate, suburban residential with 15,000 square foot lots, and suburban residential with 12,000 square foot lots for the zoning designation. These are, the suburban residential is typically classified as just your suburban land use category with very large lot sizes. The proposed design plan includes multifamily for the track north of the canal, and then a single-family R4 for the track south of the canal. You'll notice that there is some area that is hatched out. That is where they are proposing to have the elementary school be developed. So for the first phase, this is their concept plan for the multifamily portion. This is really and truly only multifamily in name. This is a product that is actually more of a horizontal multifamily as the development would be all on one platted lot, and then each of these residents would just be essentially like a condo on that one lot. You can see from the table here, these single-family, multifamily type development is, has a single bedroom, a two-bedroom concept, and then up to a three-bedroom. So again, in this first phase, showing the amenity plan, they have a proposed clubhouse, a swimming pool, a barbecue area, a gym center, and then a private dog park. These are some elevations that were provided that are also in the staff packet. And then this is the second set of elevations. So there is criteria within the Unified Development Code about establishing a new plan development area. I won't cover the yeses, I'll just briefly dive into the no and the possibly at the end. The no is on this development being a mixed-use development or a traditional neighborhood development, which requires more flexibility or innovative design standards. This is a no simply because this could be done through standard zoning districts. So the multifamily or the R4 are base zoning categories, and there are no significant deviations required to meet their plan development outside of the normal zoning criterion. The possibly is in reference to this, this is the largest infill development area that we have left, and that's using wide quotation marks there, simply because it's a greenfield development. It's just that this is some of the last area that has not been developed within the city limits. There are some special design considerations that were taken into account for the original Massey Oaks Ranch, but not all of those design considerations were copied and pasted into this development. Again, to the rest of the criterion, there's no, or this set of land uses doesn't act as a buffer or a transitional in-between incompatible land uses. It's difficult to be a buffer or incompatible when the land is not developed. So that's a no, but it is not a harsh no to not meet the criterion. And then the land is proposed for development as a major office, retail, commercial, or industrial employment center, and special design standards may be warranted. Again, with not having any retail or non-residential component, that's why this gains a no from the conformity to criterion. Both of those are not, I would say that both of those are not deal breakers for this plan development to move forward. With that, that wraps up staff's report.
All right, thank you for that. I guess we'll move forward and have our applicant report. So you would name an address for the record, and appreciate you being here today.
Thank you. Alan Mueller with Gromax Development here representing Massey Oaks this evening and the Lou tract. So we're gonna have a multi-pronged presentation for you, so we'll try to be cognizant of your time after everything you spend here this evening, but we did wanna make sure we get the full story across. As you see, this is kind of a unique piece of property that's cut up with the drainage channel and pipelines and power line easement. There are some challenges that are associated with this, which is what led us to the PD in the first place. So just some introductions. First, we have David Jarvis, he's with John Burns Consulting, they're a market analyst firm, and we just wanted to spend a few minutes with you discussing the build-for-rent market, since that's probably a new concept to a lot of folks. And as Martin mentioned, it does fit under multifamily, but it's really not multifamily. So that's why this is kind of an evolving housing product type that just doesn't really fit into any really good categories. It's really not multifamily, but certainly it's not all the characteristics of single-family as well. So David will handle that. Andrew Lang with BGE, the planner, will follow after him, and then we'll wrap up, and then I think you probably know Ron Cobb is here, and Peter Gashon with the First Capital, and then of course, you know, Paul Gromen. So not all of us are gonna speak, but we'll start with David and then Andrew after that, if you could switch over.
My name is David Jarvis, as Alan said, I'm with John Burns Real Estate Consulting, and we're in the business of helping investors, developers, banks, lenders of all kind, make well-informed real estate investment decisions. And I've been asked to talk about the single-family rental space. And I hope you find this presentation interesting. I promise I will not go through all these numbers. I just put this up for a moment to point out to you that the single-family rental business is about 35% of all rented homes, that includes apartments, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump right past that. Does anybody live down the street from a single-family rental? I have, and on several occasions. It really wasn't kept up very well. The landlord didn't keep it up, the tenant didn't keep it up, and my neighbors and I couldn't wait for somebody to buy it and live in it and be an owner of it like we were. And that may be your concept, and that's why I brought this slide along. Notice that well in excess of 80% of the single-family homes that maybe we've lived next to belong to a mom-and-pop operation, and maybe it hasn't been kept up so well like was my, in my example, in my history. If you look all the way to the bottom of that, only about 1% of the single-family rental space is controlled by institutional investors, and that's what Massey Oaks wants to do. They qualify as one of those institutional investors. Their financing is institutional, their investment is institutional, and I want to show you by way of some examples how the institutional owners have kept up with their investment. One of the things that you'll notice is a little bit different between apartments and the single-family rental market is the number of bedrooms. Won't spend a lot of time on this. You will find in some of the cottage homes and some of the homes that we want to build, they are a one-bedroom, one-bath, but they also increase. One of the things that we really, really like about this space, this is gonna make you want to invest in it. We went all the way back to 1982, if I'm seeing that correctly, and we overlaid there, the pink areas are the recessions since 1982, including the Great Recession, which is the most memorable probably for all of us in the room. First thing we plotted was home values, right? Single-family homes that we all live in. Notice how volatile that blue line is over time, running up during positive economic times and dropping in value during recessions. Next, we plotted the, I'm gonna say that looks like a gold line to my eyes, those are the apartments, a little less volatile on their rents, but still twice on this timeline, rents went negative during recessions. And then we plotted the single-family rental all the way back to 1982, notice that the rents are more stable. And having tracked this through COVID last year, we know that apartments lost occupancy, then they lost rental rates, and they didn't begin to recover until February of this year in terms of their occupancy. Then in March of this year, we began to see the rental rates coming back up. The occupancies never did decline through COVID on the single-family rental communities. I'm gonna define that for you in a little while, right? I've got a better slide for that. In fact, they excel. They were up 6% on a national basis this past year, just because they're so popular. We'll talk about what makes that popular too. Going, hitting the arrows, but nothing's happening. Frozen? Oh, good, IT is here. Try not to touch any unapproved buttons. There's a full-service approach to the build-for-rent communities. These are purposely built communities for rent. The onsite service, the full-service model is to have onsite leasing, up to three models. Services include onsite property management, 24-hour maintenance. That means eight to five, and then if someone's available, and then a phone call if there's an emergency, to be perfectly honest about that. Loan service, trash service, the kinds of amenities that most of these include that the tenants really like are gates, pools, clubhouse, fitness, trails, parks, dogs. In fact, 50% of the tenants have kids. The tenants are more likely to have dogs than even kids. We have to account for that. The minimalist model really doesn't apply to what we're talking about tonight. And here's what the inside of one of these looks like, and I brought great pictures for you. Some are similar to forced sale housing, spec levels have granite versus laminate countertops, tile versus fiberglass, actually nine- and 10-foot ceilings in most cases, single and two-car garages, double vanities in the masters in the two bedrooms. Very resilient, if you will, a lot of the faux wood or the vinyl laminate floors that are almost indestructible and look so nice. If you take a look down that right side for just a moment, that is the percent of the communities that we're tracking. We're tracking on over 300 purposely-built single-family rural neighborhoods around the nation, and these are the features that they, that they have, some of the things that we've talked about. Very, very nice finish. The kinds of amenities for the community, pools, trails, gated entrances, some have it, some don't, lots of parks, very much a mini master plan community, the kind of place that everybody wants to live. And one of the questions that we keep getting asked is, where do these tenants want to live? So we went out to, into our database and took a look at Phoenix, Arizona. That's what you're looking at there. That's ground zero for this, this space, the single-family rental space. This is where it really got hot. By the way, we keep waiting for them to overbuild this, that's what builders do, but it hadn't happened. There are even more than this many single-family rental communities on the ground right now, and every time a new one goes on the ground, it leases up and we get on to the next one. We have graded these parts of town, grade A to grade F, self-explanatory. The gold line, the gold is the kind of a balloon is the bill for rent, and green are new communities. And so you can see that where they are and what the consumers have told the market in Phoenix is, they want to live in the same places as new homeowners. So we use this as a way to illustrate that and answer that question for you. Communities are popping up in master plan communities around the US. One of them that's not on this list that I'm gonna show you later is Alamo Ranch in San Antonio. If you haven't seen Alamo Ranch, you're ever over there, it's a wonderful community. They have one of the really, really cool bill-for-rent communities as well. By the way, I can now say that Larry Johnson will have his first bill-for-rent community, and that's going to be in spring up near the Woodlands at the Harmony Master Plan. They closed on that tract of land last month, so that's the first one in his communities, and more to come there. This is the most fun part. Now we get to the pictures. This is the Alamo Ranch, called Birdsong at Alamo Ranch, a really clever, both one car and no car, surface parking, very attractive, leasing up like crazy, opened in June of 2020, leasing up almost 20 units a month, and very, very popular in size, they're 850 square feet to about 1,400 square feet. If you get a chance, this would be a wonderful place to visit, make an appointment. First time I went out there, they wouldn't let me in the door. I didn't have an appointment, they're too busy. I had to make an appointment and come back, but it was worth it. I like their architecture. Here's what it looks like inside. Looks like, if there's an architect in the room, is that a nine-foot ceiling? What it looks like. There's the vinyl plank flooring, high ceilings, ceramic tile backsplash, in this case, a quartz countertop, fiber internet. Washer dryer connections, in some cases you can rent, and stainless steel appliances just to look current. Beautiful home. Another streetscape and a look at the amenity center, 24-hour maintenance, 24-hour fitness center, heated resort-style pool, fire pit, very pet-friendly, carports available, and then a nice 3D look at what some of the floor plans look like. One bedroom starting at 851, two bedrooms, 1,200 square feet, two and a half with the garage. And if you don't have an attached garage, you can rent a garage. Two-car, 1387. Let's see what these rent for. I'm just kind of curious, because I don't remember. From about $1,450 to $2,100 square, $1,455 to $2,100. And in terms of who looks, I'm reading the wrong one, sorry about that. The one, Villa. In terms of who lives here, the institutional money sets a FICO score. That's FICO scores at 620. And so you really won't find, I want to use the words credit bandit, because I owned a rental home once in my life. I hope I never do that again. That was an accident. Didn't sell the house. I rented to a credit bandit, never want to do that again. The people who live in these communities have good credit scores, they have down payments, maybe they lack a little bit of down payment, they're just not ready for homeownership. We recently reached out to 1,000 tenants in these communities around the country. 54% of those 1,000 people we talked to said they're on their way to homeownership, it's just not right for them right this minute. And credit is not one of those issues. It's about cash, it's about lifestyle. We talked to single moms, we talked to single dads who don't have the kids quite as often. This is a little higher density. This is up in Dallas, it's called a Villa. I would have called it a Villa, but they actually call it a Villa. This is someone out of Phoenix, Arizona, built a lot of these communities around Dallas. These are, there's the 1,450 to 2,100, 650 to 1,250 square feet. I'll close it up again, sorry about that. There we go. Not quite as elaborate, right, as the Alamo Ranch, still a very attractive interior. Nice rec center, nice amenities, let's call it an amenity center, putting green. By the way, in case you're getting interested, because these are nice places to live, the promise is that these landlords will do everything for you except replace your light bulb. And I know that is becoming more and more attractive to me personally. More of their product, Perderra, Your Single Family Neighborhood, again, in San Antonio, $2,000 to $2,500 a month, 1,450 to 1,950 square feet. Very, very attractive and a great amenity center. You can see why a lot of people are really attracted to this particular real estate space, because it fits somewhere between apartments and homeownership, because they are homes. And there are some people that, for various reasons, aren't quite ready for the homeownership experience. I don't know, I may be going back the other way soon. Any questions or comments from anyone? Happy to entertain questions or comments. Wonderful lifestyle. If you haven't seen one of these, I would encourage you to, and you can reach out to me through our clients here. I can direct you around the state, what to look at.
I guess the question would be, do we want to let the applicant give full presentation and then come back for all the questions and answers? Let's do that, David, if you would. That way, we'll circle back. I know guys are making notes, but we'll come back to you. Appreciate it.
I'm reading through the memo, and you've got a 25-acre site. And then I think on page 14, you guys had 14 acres, and I just, I'm struggling to understand the math on where you're putting the 176, is it on 25 acres or on 14 acres?
Yes, so the north tract is 25 acres total, but obviously, when we were laying that out, we're netting out some of the encumbrances, including the right-of-way dedications and...
That gets you to the 14 acres that's quoted, or no?
So, yes, 14 acres for the actual site itself.
176 home on 14 acres.
Yes. Got it.
So, good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. As Alan introduced earlier, I'm Andrew Lang with BGE. We're the applicant in coordination with the Lou family. So just wanted to give you a brief overview of the project, a little more in-depth. So this is the project location here. As Martin mentioned before, we are on the south side of Old Massey Ranch and just east of Future Harky Road, east and north of the Massey Oaks Land Development. So the idea behind our plan development application here is that what we think we would like to do is create a standalone development, but that complements the Massey Oaks development with the interest of providing some additional land uses and a mix of uses that will complement the development in the surrounding neighborhood. So with the primary focus of that being the single-family rental product, obviously. So this is our design plan. We have four different units, ranging from one bedrooms to three bedrooms. The A unit being the smallest archetype that we have within the development. And then moving up from there, it starts at about 950 square feet, so moving up to north of 1,200. And some of the units, the As and Bs are primarily, have surface parking within the development, and the Cs and Ds actually have their own garages. So as Martin mentioned before, in our amenity plan, we do have a leasing center that has several different amenities, the pool, the barbecue space. We've also planned for the dog park towards the south side and are interested in providing some trail connectivity, not just within the development itself. We have a significant amount of sidewalks that connect our units to each other and to provide accessibility to the vehicles and walkability within the development. But we are also planning to provide a trail system that will connect from within the development around the detention pond and provided that we're able to get the appropriate approvals, we would also like to provide trail connections across the creek to the south side of the tract so that there's some walkability and connection between the two halves of the development, if you will. So this is a bit more of an updated rendering that we wanted to provide, an example of the, what we expect the proposed architecture to look like. This is the A unit. It's a two-story, one-bedroom unit. It's going to be about 950 square feet. They will have the enclosed patio at the rear, as David mentioned before, and surface parking will be provided for this unit within the private drives on the development. And we're also providing for some guest parking within the development as well. This is our B unit, which is a two-story, two-bedroom, a little more than 1,100 square feet. This unit will also have the enclosed patio and surface parking as well, as you can see from both of the two elevations that we've seen so far. These are kind of more along the lines of a traditional, single-family home than akin to what you would expect to see from a garden-style apartment complex or, you know, a board-dense, mid-rise apartment complex. These are really, truly more akin to a single-family detached home than they are in apartment So then this is the C unit here. It's a two-story, two-bedroom, a little more than 1,200 square feet. And again, this is, you know, really more of a traditional, single-family residence. This will provide one parking space in the garage, and they'll have an additional space in front with their enclosed patio at the rear. And then finally, the D unit, which is the largest unit that we have proposed, it's going to be a two-story, three-bedroom, more than 1,500 square feet. There's a two-car garage and an enclosed patio, and then as you can see at the front, we have a front porch as well, so more of a traditional, single-family elevation. So to briefly discuss the south side of the drainage channel, we are coordinating with AISD to place a school site on the south side, and that will kind of determine our, how we proceed further if they're interested in the site. So if they are, then we would potentially like to discuss developing the south side with townhomes with what's left after the school site and detention. But if that does not move forward, then we would like to just stick with our standard R4 zone. It would be very similar to what we've already proposed and have the approved PD4 with Massey Oaks. And again, we intend for those two developments to function as standalone developments, but to complement each other. So and then as you can see, this is just our zoning exhibit with the school site overlay. It would be more towards the south side, and we've laid out a sample school site. This isn't necessarily exactly what would be developed here, but that's our intent. And we are available for any of your questions or comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Ron or Peter, did you have anything to add before we get into questions? We're good. Okay. Just wanted to reiterate one thing on the single-family rental. That is intended to be one reserve, so each of those units, they would not be on individual lots. That would be one reserve, it would not be sold, each individual unit would not be sold separately. It would be common maintenance on everything. So that might be different than some of the build-for-rent products you may have seen in other places. So with that, we'll wrap up, and you ready for any questions?
All right. Staff, do you have any wrap-up comments?
Nothing in addition.
All right, then we'll turn it over to council for questions, comments, concerns.
Martin, a question for you. Are they stubbing out in this design?
Are they what?
Are they stubbing out? I didn't see if they're stub or not. Rendering was good, but I couldn't see...
Like a street stub?
Yes, sir. Are they connecting to the rest of the development?
So, go back.
Sure.
Yeah. So what, on this side, this is the extension of Harky. So this is where Harky would get built, and so the build-for-rent, just because of that short distance, there would be no connection to Harky there. Their entrance would become off of County Road 100. And then to the south, again, there would be entrances to this section off of Harky when that gets built. At this point, we haven't gotten into the detail, but we have not contemplated stub outs going east. Again, this is a gate, this would be a gated section up here, so we hadn't contemplated that stubbing out. And then down here, if you tried to stub out going east, you've got to cross the several pipeline corridors, center point transmission corridor, and the Coward Creek diversion. So I haven't really got into that detail, but there would be some challenges about trying to...
Probably just so, how do the kids in the multifamily piece, how do they get to the school then? Are they just going to go over the pipeline?
Again, you know, we'll have to do sidewalks on Harky and 100. Our goal would be to be able to build a trail connection across here. But as noted, we got to, there's about five different entities we have to get approval from, so that's...
Lot.
Yeah, if that, barring that, you know, we do build the traditional six-foot sidewalks on both 100 and Harky.
Okay, great. Martin, will you pull up table four from the memorandum? I believe it's page 14. I just want to make sure my Aggie math is right. The land use summary? So just because it's one plat, that's why I'm freaked out. So you have 25 acres, one reserve, but functionally speaking, I just want to make sure we're getting this accurate, I don't want to misrepresent anybody. We're building 176 homes on the 14.69 acres.
Yes, sir.
So that density is, let me get my calculator here, I'm not that smart. 176, let's round up to 14.7, 11.97 units the acre. Got it? And I'm just in information gathering mode, so give me just a minute. Go in for me, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Jarvis. And so are the representation on that, is one builder building all 176 of the units?
Yes.
Do we know who that builder is?
Not yet.
So that, so those renderings are speculative?
Yes, so we have an architect who prepared the floor plans and the renderings.
But we don't have the person who's building that yet.
No, sir.
Okay. I just wanted, I'm trying to get data here, I'm sorry. The only reason I say is, of the four renderings, you have 25% skirt. And when I think of master plan community, which I think this is, 25% skirt is not my, it's higher, it's like higher. And so it's starting to become an indicator of what this may be. As somebody in the land development profession, worked on Sienna Plantation, the 3,700 acres there, I'm aware of the Vistancia, the Harmony, I worked on Woodson Reserve next to Harmony. And we repeatedly, for the last few years, passed on this. Larry and the Johnson team has repeatedly passed on this, but I think the numbers are so great now that he's making financial mismanagement by saying no to this. And so I have passed on these already twice. Vistancia, as Mr. Jarvis will point out, is like a 20,000-acre community, like they just have to work through the land, like there's not, it's not like the last one. In Harmony, at least, there's a small pod there, and you kind of have to jam some stuff on it. So I kind of understand the math there. The part that I'm struggling with, and this is not a design issue, is I don't know how this lives five years from now. There's no, we don't know who the builder is. I have a speculative rendering, and the density is high. And I just, I have a commitment for the voters who voted to me to like uphold certain things, and land value is one of those, property value is one of those. I can't make that promise. I don't know. At least with an apartment, there's been apartments for a long damn time, and I know what that looks and feels like, I know the problems surrounding it, and I know all the positives, too. I won't know that with this scenario. Perderra, just for the record, is the one that the Brazoria County Commissioners got very, very upset with, down 288, and has essentially shut down development in Brazoria County for another Perderra community. And so I'm not saying that they're the experts, and I trust those county officials to make reasonable judgments. And if they're shutting this kind of a community down, it really makes me question why I want to bring that to our city. So I don't know that I'm going to be in favor of this, there's too many question marks. The density makes me uncomfortable, and the institutional investor, I don't know if we will be sending a bill to New Jersey. I don't know how we'll do code enforcement, you know. There's a lot of people who own apartments, sometimes they're not kept up, and then we send an address to LA, you know, for a violation, and what happens? Sometimes they're not kept up, and then we send an address to LA, you know, for a violation, and what happens? There's not, there's not the accountability mechanism. So I'm probably not going to get there on this, but I appreciate the presentation. I appreciate the applicant, and I look forward to seeing what the future holds.
I appreciate you jumping out there. I was actually going to planning and zoning before council.
My apologies, Mayor.
And I didn't want to interrupt you just out of the spirit of, of cooperation tonight. So if we would, I'd like to turn it over to Planning and Zoning Commission to, if you'll notice, I've done that in every single one of our joint meetings. I've gone to planning and zoning for.
I just got so excited.
And I, and I understand you're the resident expert on development, and so you had to jump out there. So with that, I want to jump to planning and zoning for your comments.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Chair.
Appreciate it. And I do need to note that Chairperson Fuertes has recused himself as well, so I wanted to put that on record. I figure we'll just go down the row here. Commissioner Cade, if you, anything?
Um, I do, I, I have some questions about management. I'm not sure. I know I heard you say management, but is there a way to ensure management? You know, how are they going to be cared for over the years? But I also, I'm not completely against this either. I actually kind of like it. They look good to me. And I don't, we don't have, I don't remember new rentals in a while. And this kind of is a personal, real quick story. My son tried to find a place to live in Pearland very recently and could not find a place to live in Pearland that he could afford. And this is with, you know, he's 24 with a new $40,000 a year job. And him and his girlfriend could not find a place in Pearland to live. So I think it's, it's interesting to think about these. I, so I, that's where I'm at.
Mr. Isawer.
Well, I was on P&amp;Z when, when y'all first brought the Massey Oaks to us. And, you know, it was a great development. I remember standing here late one night and us cussing, discussing, and, and, and trying to work out everything, and y'all were real cooperative and stuff. But I got to admit, on this here, it's horizontal apartments. And, and, and our citizens have stressed to us that they didn't want horizontal, or they didn't want apartments. Not only that, when y'all, when y'all gave it to us, it was all given to us as a housing project, as, as residential building. You know, this, this might work in, in Arizona and it's working in other places, and I'm not, I'm not saying that it won't. But I'm, you know, it's, it's just going to be a long stretch for me to get there. You're talking about building one-car garages. And then, right around the corner, you're going to have homes that you're building in there that you're going to have, the majority of them are going to have two-car garages, I'm sure. You know, I've, I've called some people that I know that are young, young people. And I've asked them about, it just seems like our younger kids today, I, I want them to have the American dream of owning a home. But this here, it's, it's, the way I feel about it, it's a great business model for y'all, for the, for the developer to, to build, you know, own that piece of property and manage that piece of property. But I'm not sure that it's really a great deal for the young person that's moving in there. The rates are such that that kid's probably not going to ever be able to save up to, to, to buy a home for, for several years. Now, you know, I know y'all said that 54% of the people were looking at homeownership after being in there, what, six, seven years? But that's still 46% of the people over two, was it two years or six or seven years?
Interviewed a thousand current tenants, and if their position right here, right now, 54% said they were on their way to homeownership. This was a stepping stone. And the other 46% said they're currently renting. They didn't indicate that they necessarily were on their way to homeownership.
Okay. So that was, that, there wasn't any timeline of when they were in there.
Right here, right now.
Okay. But, but, you know, so basically, you got almost, I mean, you got 4% edge there, but still, you got 46% that you're looking at renters. And I'm, you know, Councilman Kamkar made this statement, you know, I can see what it looks like now, but what is it going to look like five, 10 years down the road? You know, I live in a subdivision that's, that's a little over 20 years old now. And I've lived there for right at 20 years and, and, but it's definitely taken on a different complexion when we have renters come in there and enter renting. We, our HOA has to stay on top of the owner in order to make sure everything's maintained to the quality of what our original subdivision was. You know, it's like I said, I'm not against new ideas or anything like that. You know, I've tried to not be an old man on a lot of this. I really have. I've, I've, I know that the young people think a little bit differently than, than I do. But I just hope that one day, as they grow up, they'll, they'll get some sense, you know. And, and, but, but, you know, I, it's just going to be a long reach for me to get there. I'm, I'm sorry. This is just the way I feel.
Commissioner Earls.
Thank you. Good evening. My questions, I guess, are one about access to the school. That was a major concern, I guess, a question that I had. Those people living in that area, how do they actually get to the school? Let me see, you said crossing over was one option or solution?
So, yeah, as we discussed, our, our plan is to provide a trail connection across the Coward Creek diversion channel. As we said, that's, that's going to be subject to approval of several entities. But additionally, that we will have Harkey Road, future South Harkey, south of Old Massey Ranch, that will provide vehicular connectivity, and we'll have sidewalks there as well. So ideally, in, in our perfect world situation, is we would have both of those connections available to us. And you would have the, you would have the vehicular connection from Harkey Road.
And the area closest to schools, are they planning to infill that area as well?
I'm sorry?
Where the school is going to be located? Is there planning to infill that area?
Yeah. So as, as we were discussing, our, our plan at the moment would be if, if the school does move forward on the south side of the site, that we would contemplate some townhouse product there as well. And, you know, we're not asking for any.
Basically the same product, though, that you put there?
No. No.
And I guess, again, I don't want to say the same thing, but it's, my concern, again, another one, is what is it going to look like five years? Six years from now? Is there a tangible model that you can show current pictures? It looks good, brand new. I'm sure it does. But again, the population's going to be there. And whatever the business model is on upkeep, I'm very interested in seeing what that looks like years down the line.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would, you know, I appreciate everybody coming and speaking, and, and that's what this workshop's for, for us to have these questions. So one of my big question was, you know, out, in addition to the, the first part, I guess, of the, of the land on the north side, we're looking at, you know, remaining nine acres for single-family, which is, doesn't seem like that much. So I don't know how many houses, I mean, I would, would, yes, Councilman Kamkar could do the math on a house product. Okay.
Yeah. Net of detention, just using multiple of four.
Multiple of four? Okay. So, you know, there's a product there. The, the, the concern for me is the, the school. I, I'm a little torn on this product because you build a school, and people are going to live, they want to live next to it. If their kids can walk there, that product's going to be favorably viewed. If the school doesn't go in, then the people that live south of the product are not going to be excited because they don't have a school and they have a multifamily product just north of them. So, you know, with the pipeline and the creative nature, you're going to have to have with the crisscross of easement ingress and egress. You know, you're, you're shrinking your land. What I do appreciate being passed on PEDC was when you have a difficult property, you have to get creative in its utilization, and that's what you're doing. And I do appreciate that because we have those products all over town with pipelines and former oil field sites and current oil sites and that kind of thing, south of town. So it, it, it does require some outside-the-box thinking. My, my worry a little bit on this product is its lack of history. Again, I'm, you know, five or seven years, but more of, you know, the examples you gave are relatively new to the market, if not brand-new. My understanding of Johnson Development's product in Spring is the first one in the area. You know, Johnson Development is, you know, strong there, you know, to say the least. And, and their products are, 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 you know, well-documented, well-tracked. This product, if, if they hesitated on it, it does give me hesitation. And then the thought in the future is, is, you know, no one likes apartments if this doesn't feel like an apartment. They may be a little disconnected, but the truth of the matter is, it is a multifamily product, similar and the same as an apartment complex. And so, I mean, I live in Shadow Creek, and that, we're inundated with multifamily over there, but it's zoned for it. And so, you know, as much as we don't like it, there's not much we can do about it. So I worry that if, if this product comes online, the surrounding areas, the Massey groups and, and product that you're going to build in the future are going to be impacted by it going forward. So I worry about the fact that the school is, is still up in the air. I wish I had a little more direction with that. I would feel better about the product. If you said, you know, AISD is in, they're going to take the school property down, you know, they're doing their due diligence, and they have, they have at least verbally agreed to it, I would feel better about that. I'd feel better knowing if, what kind of builder it was going to be or who the builder was. I know it's still early, and that's why we're doing this. You're still working on it. I get it. But it's still, it still feels a little early to me, and I still feel like, you know, we could do a little more discovery on this before, you know, you fell on your sword on it, on this kind of a product. But I don't like being the first ones off the ground with this kind of a product. If Johnson Development is at first, then, you know, we are. And if they're not first, we're at least second, so it's still early to me for it to, to feel favorably toward it yet. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. David, if you would, I thought there's other single-family rental communities in the greater Houston area. That Johnson Development's not the first one, maybe the first one in a master planned, in a certain type of a master planned community. But I know the SFR world has been around for a little more than, than a few years. Now, I will say this, I, I've, you know, being in the, in the business as well, I'm, I'm very aware of the single-family rental community space. It is something, and unfortunately, you're not going to have these rental communities that are 20 years old that you can go and look at. And the reason is, the space just isn't that old. So you're not going to have it to, to go and look. But, but David, I think there's more than Johnson Development that's, that's done this in the Houston area.
Yeah, that's right. So we have Cottage Style Inn in Conroe on the South Loop 336 called The Cottage Green. You can look that up on the website. That'll look. Camillo Properties, which is Mike Camillo, were legend homes. Got into building single-family rental for their own portfolio more than five years ago. And actually, what Mike Camillo and, and Margaret Potter are doing now is several years ago, they started buying enough land to, and for 500 homes. A third of those go into their rental pool, and they have their own separate bill-for-rent environment. And then the other two-thirds are, are sold off to homeowners. And what I've heard from Margaret, who runs the operation, is that they take such good care of their institutional investment on those 150 homes that they have their tenants go next door to their, their legend home sales office and say, gosh, did you ask your homeowners to take better care of their homes and their yards and don't park in the streets? And that gets back to the questions about the one-off mom and pop and who traditionally hasn't done as good a job as the institutional investor who's, who's, who's borrowing and investing tens of millions of dollars in protecting that investment. We can go around Houston and take pictures of five-year-old communities. We can take pictures of communities in, in Phoenix where they're older than that. And if somebody wants me to, I can send one of our consultants around with a cell phone and photograph things at a minimum five years old. And I believe you'll, you'll like the looks of the maintenance in a professionally maintained community better than a five-year-old entry-level community. That's just the difference in the availability of funds.
Other questions from council? Start down here. Woody?
No, well, no, not really. I mean, you know, anything can go up and down five-year period of time. You know, you really don't know what's going to happen during that period of time. But, you know, the way I see it on here, is that it, you know, it's, it's a step up from apartment, but it's still, you know, it, it gives you the feel of being in a home. That's what it happens to be. But, you know, it's, it's the same thing. You know, you go down here on Pearland Parkway, over here, right across from the church, and the apartment's over there, a two-bedroom or three-bedroom apartment. I think my son paying 1,900 a month, or three-bedroom apartment over there, you know, and so. And the other one, you know, you step down a little bit. Of course, that's all you get is apartment, maybe a little patio cover out there. But I don't, you know, I don't, really don't have a problem with it at all. I, I think, you know, if somebody wants to live in a home they can't afford to pay, you know, to buy a home, and it's not only what you pay the, you know, on a monthly deal for a home, but also what you have to come up with to get in, you know, in the first place. So that gives them the option. I can see what, you know, they said over there on, on the P&amp;Z that, you know, that it's hard for somebody making a little bit less money to go in to it and try to save up money to go and, you know, buy a home. But personally, I bought, I was a veteran. I paid a dollar down, you know, so, so that was a good thing the government did for me. The only good thing they did for me.
What was the 1,700, though? It was the 1,700. Dollar meant a lot more then.
Yeah. I moved out, I moved out an apartment, and, and we only had a one-bedroom apartment. I had, had a son in there, and so it was three of us. But I couldn't afford to go into a two-bedroom apartment because it's $5 more a month. So, so after I done that, moved in there, you know, it was about the same thing, about 1,600 square feet or whatever. But anyway, I think, you know, if, if, if it's a market for it, that's fine. If kids want to, you know, our younger folks do it. And we always say younger folks, but, you know, I'm old enough now. I want to step down a little bit lower than what I've got, you know, on the number of square feet. Wife's getting tired of cleaning it, so, you know, I'm thinking of her. But anyway, you know, that's, that's it. You know, you, you go from something small into a larger home. Then also, you get to the point, then you want to step down, you know, a little bit when you get in the other years. So, I mean, if it's a market for it and people are willing to do it, you know, I think, you know, what I've seen here in the pictures and everything, they don't look bad at all. But I don't think anybody can tell you what, what it's going to look like, but it, you know, after a period of time, but most of them, if the renters, the property's going to be kept up, you know, the people that own the facilities are going to make sure they're kept up. So that's about what I have, you know, on here, too, then.
Remember Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate all your comments so far. Straight to the point, I, I'm for the development. We've said this in a previous meeting. I, I think in order for Pearland to grow with the limitations that the state has put upon us and the availability of land and the cost of land, that density is our next step. I'm not necessarily, I wouldn't be necessarily against this if this was an apartment development. I'm certainly not against it if it's going to be this hybrid model to dovetail to what the mayor said. I've gotten, I'm getting a lot of interest from people wanting to do similar developments throughout the city of Houston to deal with certain challenges, zoning issues, or trying to get density on smaller tracks. I think it's a great idea, personally. I do think what we need to do in the, in the PD document is address, address the parking concern. So I guess, John, how would we? So I guess, John, how would we interpret this? If this is not necessarily a multifamily project, would we still hold it to the same multifamily parking count?
We would base it on the, on the homes, but because of the smaller driveways and closer houses, we would probably seek to add certain parking requirements within the document.
I mean, could we, do you think we could get to, you know, I think a single family is two, two spaces per home. Think we could get, get there on this?
Yes, with, with the garages at the setbacks are over like 12, 15 feet, then you're going to have room for the front as well.
So when we, when we say two spaces for home, if it's a two-car garage and has minimal driveway, do we count all that? So is that kind of what y'all are targeting?
So, yes, what we, what we have now actually is the, the D units have a tandem two-car garage and they will have enough space for a third space in front of the unit. Right now, the perimeter units with the driveways and, and then if you see to the right, there's the island of Cs and Ds, the pink and yellow there that are also providing driveways. They're all set back in that design plan 19 feet. So that would contemplate an additional parking space in front of the units themselves. And as I mentioned before, the C units also have the, the one-car garage. So they would, they would at least have, have two spaces as well.
Wish the fire marshal was here. I'd like to ask a couple of questions of him because just looking at the site plan, I just don't see that you have, if this is going to be considered a multifamily development, we need two means of egress that are remote. I don't know that we have that. So I think if we're going to move forward with this, let's address that with the fire marshal, possibly a, an alternative, a path onto Harkey or something, something of that nature. And I'm a little concerned with the 25-foot street, mostly because if we have two, two cars per home, that these are, it's going to be treated as a neighborhood. We're going to have some street parking. And my concern would be that if, if we have people who are parking on the street and there's a fire within the residential neighborhood or whether this pseudo-residential neighborhood, do we have the capability of the fire truck getting in there and getting deep into the subdivision? You know, if it was, if it's my house, we probably, we, we have a bunch of cars and my wife has a lot of guests over. So we usually kind of jam the parking or the street around us. If we lost three feet of that road, it may be near, very difficult for the, for a fire truck to pass. So I'd have a concern there.
Sure. So we've, in, in thinking about that in the design, we had actually designed that with, with that in mind. The surface parking that's provided is outside of the, the private drives, outside of the, the drive aisles. And again, we're providing additional parking spaces in front of some of those units to help, you know, kind of assuage that concern. We are accounting for some additional guest parking as well. We're providing, I believe, 30, 30 guest, guest parking spaces throughout the development. Basically, we're, we're going at a rate of about one, one visitor parking space for every, for every six dwelling units within the development. And then we also have additionally 22 leasing parking spaces before you get behind the gate to help reduce some of that on-street clutter.
Fair enough. You know, I'm, I'm trying to resist the temptation of digging too, too deep into your site land. But I'd say generally I'm for it. I, I think, you know, the density is not dissimilar from what we see in the townhome portion of Baker's Landing. It's not different from Maryland Bullard's Old Property to the south of the, the C V S. So the density doesn't necessarily bother me. Single ownership doesn't necessarily bother me because there's a lot of examples of single home developments where the people are remote. So I don't feel a necessity to hold this to a different standard. Personally, I can see how others can have that concern, but I don't personally see that. So I'd like to see it move forward. I, I will caveat that I, I'm not in support of y'all pursuing a school in that location. That is not a good spot for a school. It's, you've got nothing to the south of it. It's a single means of egress. And as everybody's moving south and the schools are also moving south, you're going to have a lot of backup onto that, onto Harkey Road. And there's, there's nothing that's going to come south of it. If the district is interested in purchasing that property because that's what they want, then that's certainly theirs to pursue. But I don't see, from my perspective, that's not sweetening the pot to make this project move forward. To me, it, it hurts the development because, again, that's just not a, it's not a great location for a school. So if you want to eliminate that from the proposal, I'd probably be more comfortable with the overall change of the P D. That's all I have, Mayor.
Member Little?
Yeah, just a few things. We've got a creek running between these two properties. How did this land do during Harvey?
Again, just from looking at aerial photos, this property stayed dry. And I mean, there was certainly surface ponding, but to the best of our knowledge, with just looking at aerial photos during Harvey, this didn't come out of its banks at this location. And it's all, it's all zone X. It's not, it's not floodplain. None of the property, other than the creek itself is floodplain.
Unshaded? Zone X unshaded?
I'm kind of on the fence right now. First, we're not voting on it tonight. We've got time to look into it further. Have you guys looked at the, which fire station would be servicing this area and, and additional police that might be needed with this concentration? And once this place gets developed and built out and rented out?
No, sir. I don't, I don't believe so, but we could, we could certainly look into that for you.
Obviously, more police officers would be needed and response times for the nearest fire station would be, need to be looked at. How many meetings have you guys had with A I S D as determining where they are with the school? And how close getting them on board, do you think you are?
Again, we've met primarily with their facilities folks and we also met with the superintendent some time ago. We haven't been to any official meetings with the school board, but probably at least a half a dozen or more conversations and meetings with staff. And so where they are right now is they're waiting for their fall enrollment numbers to be finalized, which are supposed to be October-ish, is when their numbers get finalized for the fall. I guess last year there with COVID, their numbers were kind of unpredictable. So they really don't know how things are going to shake out. But right now, they have one site that they're pursuing in the 288 corridor, which is, you know, their highest demand right now. But they fully recognize that this is a, an area that's going to fill in. So they are very interested. But again, at this point, they're looking for probably later this fall before they can talk any further.
Only the elevations you put up, the units that did not have garages. And you said that they would be parking on private drives or that, I didn't see the drives. Are they behind the houses?
So what, what we mean is that the, the private drives that serve the rest of the development, there's, there's parking adjacent to those, parallel parking spaces and head-on, head-in parking, parking spaces and some parking lots that we've scattered throughout the development within the design plan. And, and our intention is for those parking spaces to serve the units that don't have the driveways and garages.
So it, I think it would be a safe assumption that where the tenant has a choice of parking in front of their unit or parking in a parking lot 60, 100 yards away, they're going to park in front of the, they're going to park on the street in front of their, their rental. I think that's, that's pretty much a given. And that would create some of the concerns Councilman Perez mentioned. As far as maintenance, I'm not real concerned about whether or not the property would be properly maintained. Investors are putting tens of millions of dollars into a development. I feel pretty confident they're going to take care of it. A long time ago, I managed apartment complexes and I'm familiar with the maintenance requirements. But I won't make a commitment, but I'll keep an open mind. Thank, thank you.
Member Perez, you had one other comment real quick?
Yeah, just a thought is how are we going to, this would all be part of the SPA agreement, right? So we would be doing, we would be doing, you would get, be, you'd be getting trash service from City of Pearland, I presume?
This is already in the city. Yeah. So we would anticipate annexing this into Jory County MUD 69, go through that process.
So you try and do this, this, all, all this would be part of a mud as part of a reimbursement agreement or?
That's correct. Yeah.
So how would you meter it? Would it be one master meter and then y'all would submeter?
Yeah. For the, the build for rent portion, we would anticipate that to be a master meter for water and probably sub-metered internally, you know, privately. That would be the intent.
Yeah. I, I think, I mean, maybe for, for our benefit to keep things simple, we'd want one master meter to serve the entire community. And then y'all, if somebody doesn't pay, it's y'all's to deal with and we're not going in there and having to deal with that individually.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. Each unit would have their own water meter and their own electric meter. But a, but a one master meter for water.
One more quick thing. On the units with one car garage, and you said there would be additional parking in the driveway in front of the unit. What's the approximate distance from the front of the garage to the, where the sidewalk starts?
19 feet.
19 feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that would be enough room where they wouldn't have to park most vehicles. Maybe at 350 might be in the driveway, I mean, on the sidewalk. All right. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
All right. Member Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, I, I don't quite see this as apartments. It's, it's high density. Interesting new product. In terms of the timing of this construction versus the, the remainder of the Massey Oaks, what I assume that if the demand's there, this can get built much quicker than the other lots. But I guess, can you give me timing on, on the proposed construction on this side? But then also, what do you see absorption for the rest of the Massey Oak track?
Ron Cobb, I don't normally go come up here, Massey Oaks Ranch. Timing wise, if I could answer a question before, the time, all our money right now is institutional money. Somebody said that earlier. All our money is pension fund money. From the acquisitions to the developments, it's either Canadian pension or state pension funds here in the States. And so they are ready to go for this product. We are, as you guys may see, we are doing off-site improvements to Massey Oaks and a master plan today. We're doing onsite clearing and tree trimming, as you guys may, you did a drive-by. And so we are actively going very quickly. We have, if you read any newspapers, Houston Chronicle, every, we obviously closed alone a couple of weeks ago. And so we are fully funded to go as quick as we can get people to work, which we all understand it's a little tight workforce today, but we're going to work through that. So the need is there. Somebody, I think, Councilman Cam Carr, you asked who we have been talking to, who's going to build it and things like that. As I, as we did with the Massey Oaks Ranch, we have, you know, it's proved for 950 lots. We are selling, sold 350 lots to Castle Rock and Meritage Homes. That's no secret. We have chosen not to sell anything, right, anymore to them for multitude of reasons. But we wanted to get our feet on the ground first and then deal with the rest of them. We are doing the same kind of philosophy or same practice on this build-to-rent product is I, we've could have contracted it months ago to publicly traded builders and, and Councilman Cam Carr, you are very familiar with some of them. We have chosen not to for a couple of reasons. One, we may want to hold it our own, our own portfolio and build it out ourselves. Or we will, if we get a good enough offer from a publicly traded builder, we will do that. We've had publicly traded companies, you know, I mean, anything starts with a Black is a big company. Black Rock, Blackstone, Black Rock is the largest money manager in the country. We have been in talks with them. So that's, you know, I'm just lucky and blessed that I, these guys even returned my call and let me call them. So, but this is a long-term investment for these people. This is pension fund money. This is a 10-year look. They don't even do anything for less than 10. Third-party managers, they do a first-class thing. Their, the last thing they need to do is to have a deteriorated community. And the last thing I need to do, I've done, and some of you guys have all been here long enough, that we have gone to great lengths to preserve the Massey name and the Massey ranch and the Massey trees. And I am not going to stop now. We are not, even though this is, this is across the ditch, if you will, it has got the Massey name to it. And we're going to continue to put a product out there and a neighborhood out there that all of us can be proud of and that we can go from there. So there's your, sorry about answering a few other questions at the same time. Thank you.
So I guess the point is that if this, if this moves forward, it's going to, it can move forward pretty quick as compared to the lots. I mean, I know there's 350s that are sold. I guess the question is, or the point, you're not going to be irresponsible to put a, a, a product that's not compatible with the 600 lots you're still trying to sell.
The timing, I will start tomorrow if, if we needed to. The money's there. The product is going to be what hopefully gets approved here and what we've demonstrated and represented here. Yeah. And we haven't tried to sell the 600, just to clarify that, because I'll get calls tomorrow. Somebody's watching. We are, we have not put it on the market or anything like that. We're just taking our time, getting our feet wet, trying to make sure that we, you know, delivering and, and manage the costs, material costs that we're experiencing that we all are.
I guess the, the, the questions around parking and upkeep and all that, I mean, you're going to be constantly leasing these out, whoever the operator is. And so, I mean, normally there's no incentive for a regular homeowner to mow their grass timely or to keep the facade painted. But if, if, if y'all don't take, and the way I'm looking at it is if you don't take, take care of the complex and do the required, you know, repair and maintenance, then your rent rates are going to drop, your vacancy is going to go up. So, no, this is, it, it is a new product and just wrestling around like parking. If they end up with street parking through the whole thing, the, the guy that comes in tomorrow to re-lease the unit is going to be like, man, where do I park? And how, how do I get in and out? So I think some of this solves its own, it helps to solve itself because although we feel like we're adversarial, you want, you want a good product because you're going to have to keep marketing it and releasing it. We want a good product because that, that's what we want for Pearland. So I look forward to see how this develops. As of now, I'm in support of it. I guess the, the last thing, any estimates on, from a valuation standpoint? I, I know when you look at what our top 10 taxpayers, eight of the 10 are multifamily. So any, any rough numbers on how much value we'll have on the ground?
I'm going to let somebody smarter than me answer that question. 45 million on the ground, I've been told. So 45 to 50. I mean, that's, you know, given our market. And you're right, Councilman, I mean, you're, we're not going to let it go. And I mean, they maintain the, right down to the flowers. They maintain the park, the parking. If you all live in a, if you do live in an H O A community, somebody said it earlier, they are, they're the police. So these guys are the managers and they'll manage it. We can upkeep our value.
Thank you.
Member Orlando?
Yeah, just a couple of things to start off. I, I found Member Carbone's line of questioning there pretty persuasive. And I, I feel myself being pretty warm to this. I think I just had a couple of other questions that I wanted to address. One was, I think at the beginning, and it might've been as part of the staff presentation, I think there was a mention of this being like a condo-esque style thing. But I just wanted to get clarification. I don't think anything in here is like rent to own or that there'd be any equity. It's, it's going to be perpetually rental. That's correct, right?
You're, you're correct.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Just wanted to, wanted to make sure I had that right. And then I, I do share some of the, you know, I, I, I do wonder about the, kind of the value retention that was shared by some of the P and Z members and other council members. And so to the extent that, I mean, obviously this is a relatively newer product, but to the extent that there are these communities that have been there for five-plus years, I think there would be some value for us. And in particular, some of the folks who were more skeptical to see, I, again, like Member Carbone said, I, I think that's a pretty compelling argument that you have to drive around and if it looks like crap, that's, you know, that's going to hurt you guys more than it hurts anybody else. And so I, I think that's a really strong argument. But I, I think just the real life evidence of seeing how that's played out in real-world examples. I know in particular, just doing some- I know in particular, just doing some reading online, I think I saw some developments up in Kingwood, the Woodlands, those are probably relatively newer. McKenney was mentioned, that's one of the peer cities that we use in a lot of our comparable statistics as an area that's, you know, relatively affluent and a place that we would, a community of choice, as we like to say. And so I think some examples from those would be really helpful as we continue down this process. I think, let me see, I think the last issue I wanted to address, you know, we're in the middle of our budget season right now, has come up a couple of times. And something that's really striking as you go through our budget numbers is the huge expense associated with the rebate, the payments back to MUDs, the in-city MUD rebates. So I just wanted to know if staff would be able to, I don't need a number tonight or anything, but be able to, as a part of this process, calculate what the expense of that would be to the city associated with that rebate after, if this was created?
If I'm wrong, but I don't think there's a MUD rebate on this one. Any know offhand? I think this one was created with no MUD rebate.
I think it's one of the newer MUDs that...
Should be an easy calculation then, right? Yeah, I think that's all I had. Oh, the last thing I was going to say, and you know, this is a, I talk a lot about, you know, we have three levers in the city when we're talking about our finances. We have the value on the ground, we have our tax rate, and we have our spending. Nobody up here wants to raise the tax rate. Nobody up here wants to cut our, you know, largely public safety-based budget. And so the best thing we have is, is value density on the ground. And so like Member Perez said, I think that's important. I think this is, in a lot of ways, kind of addressing some of those other concerns. I think if we can't address those, this is kind of a smart way of doing that without the big scary apartments that freak a lot of people out. And so, yeah, I have a pretty warm disposition to this. Would love to see some of that other evidence, but appreciate what's been put forward so far and look forward to continuing to work with y'all. So, thank you.
Member Hernandez?
Thanks, Mayor. Gosh, most things have been covered. I'll just say that I think that this is a type of project. As a matter of fact, Mayor, speaking, I bring up a conversation, I called you just maybe a few weeks ago and asked you about a development that you had mentioned was one of these single-family rental-type developments and had some questions about it. And you gave me a lot of really good information. And I think that there's definitely a place for this type of development in our community. And I think too, some of the comments made from our planning and zoning commissioners earlier, I, I maybe am looking at this a little differently because I came from a home to an apartment and then I'm looking, you know, for a different home. But I think we have some, some home products, you know, some residential products on the horizon here in the city that I think are going to be really well-suited for somebody like me. And I realize that I'm not the, the rule, but rather the exception here in the city. But in, in the situation where I am now, even with the prices that they had mentioned earlier on these types of products as a temporary solution until we get some of the new products that we've workshopped here previously on this council, I could still easily save, you know, I just did some quick math based on what I was spending to keep a home with a mortgage versus what I would pay with the numbers on the screen. And I could easily save towards a down payment in the amount of $750 to $900 a month of cost savings. So, I mean, I think that there is definitely a space for this. I think that, you know, as we continue to bring people and new, attract new companies into this city, that I think bring in new employees and the, the employees that come here are, you know, maybe, I don't want to say they're transient, but they may not necessarily want, you know, put roots here, but they're, they're here because we have high-paying employers, but they may be here for contract work or something like that. And they too need a place to, to stay. And a lot of our primary employers here in the city, I think, do pay pretty decent wages. So I've got no major concerns as far as, you know, some of the other concerns that like Member Perez brought forward, I think he's probably better suited to ask those questions. And I look forward to the responses. But I've got nothing else to add, Mayor. I think that this is something that we definitely could handle here in the city.
Good deal. Thank you for that. If staff would, I think the graphic that shows, I guess, the three blocks of the whole 75 acres right there. So real quick, I wanted to ask a couple of questions to the developers, but also to staff. You know, Harkey Road runs on the, on the western edge of this. And if you go further south from this, there's another, there's additional pods that go into Massey Oaks, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I wanted to address the single-source road going down to the, to a potential school site. But additionally, if you look at the Brazoria County, because I know once you get past this, you're moving into Alvin and then into, into Mamvel ZTJ. But I believe on the Brazoria County airfare plan, Harkey actually goes further south all the way to probably Highway 6. I've looked at it on a map and there's, there's additional roadway that would come up and down. I don't necessarily disagree. School sites are kind of, you can, you can make, do pluses and minuses on school sites all over the, all over the area, whether this is a good, you know, spot for them or not. But certainly this is a challenged piece. David, I'm going to ask you if you would, not necessarily have to speak, but with John Burns, I want to, I want to make sure, they probably cut their teeth on the single-family rental space and the, as far as market analysis concerned, better than any other market arm out there. There are several metro studying, which is now Zonda and a few others, but they've cut their teeth on this space probably more than anybody in the last, oh, five to six years. And so might be helpful, and I know Clay gets your weekly emails, I get them as well. Might be good to just go back in the last several months and send some of the emails about this space as, as an educational piece for our council. And Clay, that could be something to just forward out to council. We could put it in the Thursday package just to have, it's good background on the space itself, so you kind of understand what's happening in the single-family rental. And then the only other thing I would say, and then, and then we'll call it a close, and that is, you know, this is one single-family or a residential type that we need to look at as we get closer and closer to build out of our community. It's something different. It's certainly cutting-edge. It's new. This won't be the only time we are confronted with it. We'll have others come along the way. We do have two town home developments, both are for rent. One by the same developers down on South Brazoria County that, that built what Councilmember Cam Carr was talking about, built one, it's called Mirror Lake. It's 100% rental in town, but it also met the town home development. So they didn't have to come in for any kind of special consideration. And then of course, we have James Johnson's development over on Cullen and McCord. That was, it's not single-family, but it is a rental community, all of town homes. So we, even this wouldn't necessarily be breaking new ground. I mean, it is a, we have several other rental communities in the, in the greater area. I, I think as we move forward, getting a better feel for, you know, how, who it's going to, who's going to build it, the quality of builder, to Member Cam Carr's comment about the, the apron of brick, maybe we need to see a little bit more on the elevations of brick and stone, that type of stuff, if we move this product forward rather than the Hardy. Certainly understand the look that's there, but I like the amenities, I like what it brings together. So with that, I mean, that's all I've got. David, you got a wrap-up there?
Real quick, in terms of the, of the architecture being planned here, I want you all to, to go to a website for cinnamon shores in the coast, Aransas. Not Aransas Pass, it's on this side.
It's Port Aransas.
Port Aransas, Port A. And take a look at that, that architecture. It's very similar. I was there three days this past week. They sell those homes that you're going to be looking at for $700 a square foot. It's not Texas-like kind of money. That's the kind of money they're drawing with this same kind of product in that location. It's a very, very popular style. We also see it all over Austin. It's not new.
Right. And last thing, staff may want to reach out to Georgetown. That's another somewhat of a peer type of a community. I know they're up and coming and fast growth. In the packet that the applicant mentioned, they, they used, I believe it's AHV as one of their communities in your packet. They built a community in Georgetown, okay? And it was a multi-family tract that they downzoned to the single-family rental space several years ago. Be interesting to see how that space is now. Obviously, it's still relatively new. When I talked to AHV several years ago, they had just approved the zoning and were getting started with it. So it's probably three years old now. So that might be one that we can look out to. And I know that was a company that was in your, in your packet. So might be one that we can peek in on and see how it's doing. So staff, have any other wrap-up comments?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to add a couple of things. First off, I'd like to point out that both the comprehensive plan and the Pearland Prosperity Plan speak to a wider range of residential options and a diversity of options that need to be added to our community that we do have in somewhat of an overreliance on the single-family subdivision model. Our previous look at crime in our newer market rate apartments, so these will be the Shadow Creek in the last so many years, shows no statistical difference in the crime rate between those apartment complexes and our typical subdivision homes. We already have institutional rental homes in Pearland. They're in your neighborhood. There are large corporations across America that are already buying up these homes and making them rental properties. So you may live next to one now. This is just an opportunity for them to buy them all in one spot. Home ownership, is it still the American dream? For some people, yes. For some people, no. I know the last time I spent $6,000 on my air conditioning unit, I wondered if I really wanted to own a home anymore. But with the way the, anybody's been through 2009, what happened with home prices, et cetera, options are important. If this was built out as a single-family typical subdivision community, you may be looking at 65 homes in the $300,000 range, which would come out around $19 million versus what they said today. But that would include streets that we would have to maintain, that would include waterlines that we would have to maintain, that would include wastewater lines we'd have to maintain. So our maintenance from a city stops at the property line and these sort of products. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you, sir.
Good deal. With that, I appreciate everybody's time, Planning and Zoning Commission. We appreciate your time and effort here tonight as well. And I'm going to call this joint workshop closed at 8:53.